Rebecca, do we go by that clock or do we go by this clock? Because that says 5:30 already.
Whichever one you prefer.
Okay, council, I'm going to start the meeting tonight. And Rebecca, would you do roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Brown.
Excuse.
Councilmember Emir.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Rebecca, is there any, okay. The Auburn, the Auburn City Council Study Session Meeting schedule for Monday, April 22, 2024 at 5:30 PM will be held in person and virtually. To view the meeting virtually, please click the below link or call into the meeting at the number listed below. The link to the virtual meeting is www.youtube.com slash user slash watch Auburn slash live. To listen to the meeting by phone or Zoom, please call the below number or click the link, 253-215-8782, toll-free, 877-853-5257. Zoom? I can barely see it. I can barely see the Zoom. So we've done the roll call. Is there any agenda modification?
Yes, Resolution Number 5763 was removed from this evening's agenda and the special planning areas presentation was moved to the first item on the agenda.
Now, which one did you say? The one that's going to become first?
The briefing on special planning areas around Assistant Director Crown.
So we will do the briefing, special planning area.
All right, great, thank you. I'm actually going to turn it over to Alexandria T., our Planning Services Manager, for tonight's presentation on special planning areas.
Okay. Good evening, city council members. Sorry, I'm very tall, so you can see me fairly over the screen, though. So good evening, my name is Alexandria Teague. I am the Planning Services Manager. I am giving this presentation in lieu of Jeff Tate. Tonight, I'd like to provide some information, really background, on some of the city's special planning areas, in particular, our subareas. Tonight's presentation is intended to provide counsel on what a subarea is, partly because in the upcoming months, staff will discuss the comprehensive plan update with city council and subareas are a particular part of the land use. So what are special planning areas? Well, for a variety of reasons, specific areas exist within the city that require further specificity or focus of land use, planning policies, regulations, or investment. These are areas that help control growth and protect the environment and prevent urban sprawl conditions within the city. Special planning areas or subareas in particular, they exist, well, excuse me, they allow for further refinement and recognition of existing unique characteristics. They also allow for the development of a unique vision for how that area should look or function in the future, and they provide flexibility where there's uncertainty. And they also help staff and the development community anticipate and support and guide long-term growth and redevelopment through a planned development. There are three types of subareas. There's identified areas, designated areas, and adopted areas. There's about 28 subareas in total. I'll go into further detail for each type of area in the upcoming slides, but essentially identified areas, these are areas that, they're identified, but they don't have, they're not established on a map within the comprehensive plan, so their specific boundaries haven't yet been defined. Designated areas have been depicted on a map within the comprehensive plan. This means the specific or distinct and detailed boundaries have been defined. And notice I said a map within the comprehensive plan and not a map, not on the comprehensive plan map. There's a distinction there. Because adopted areas, they have gone through the individual planning process, which mean not only do they have defined and distinct boundaries, but they are identified on the comprehensive plan map, which is the city's future land use map, our future planning map. They also have a subarea plan that's incorporated within the comprehensive plan, generally adopted by reference. So this is the list of identified areas. As I mentioned earlier, they don't have a defined area on a map within the comprehensive plan. The specific or detailed boundaries will be established during a future development process. Essentially, the boundaries, the uses, the intensities, even the infrastructure development is to be determined through the individual planning process, meaning these specific areas will go through that process. Identification of a subarea within the comprehensive plan, though, occurs by official action of the city council through the comprehensive planning process. This is the list of currently designated, list of currently designated areas, and there are about 16, I believe. These areas are identified on a map within the comprehensive plan and as part of the individual planning process, they have distinct boundaries. Each of these designated areas have at least one overarching policy within the comprehensive plan. That one policy really states its purpose and its intent, like where are we going? Why is this on the map? And where are we going with this area in the future? In the future, it's intended that these areas will have its own subarea plan and that the development within these areas will be guided by said plan. And designation of a comprehensive, designation of, designation of an area on the comprehensive, on a map within the comprehensive plan occurs by official action through Auburn City Council through the comprehensive planning process. What I'm trying to say, tongue-tied, is designation of a designated area, like putting in the comprehensive plan also occurs by official action by the city council through the comprehensive planning process. Saying the word designated twice is messing me up. So here is the first list. You know, notice that some of these are corridors, Auburn Way corridor, some of these are areas. Generally speaking, special planning areas can be, they can be areas, they can be, they can be corridors, they can be streets, but this includes a mix of areas and some corridors. So here's Auburn Way North. And then we have Auburn Way South. We have the Stuck River Road, Martin Air Area. As you know, the future Sagali area, Sagali Development Area, just right now listed as a designated area. And this is a list of our adopted plans, our adopted special, our adopted subareas. This is the list of the plans and their either ordinance or resolution numbers. So at the end, the result of each individual planning process is the depiction of the subarea on the comprehensive plan map and the adoption of a subarea plan. Each subarea plan establishes the purpose of its designation, its goals and policies, and its implementation strategies. Adoption of the subarea plan also occurs by official action of the city council through the comprehensive planning process. Each plan must be consistent with the general goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan and are intended to guide the future development of that, of said area. As an adopted document of the comprehensive plan, subarea plans, they are subject to review and, if necessary, revisions to address changes and conditions, issues, or even characteristics of that planned area. So, so let me zoom in on some of these since it's hard to see. So this is the downtown. Downtown has a plan. It also has particular design standards. Many of these buildings downtown that you currently see, they're subject not only to the plan, but the design standards. It's the downtown Auburn design standards. They include things like uses, well, designers don't, there's uses they're subject to, and then the aesthetic and the site planning. This is the academy. This is the Auburn Adventist Academy Plan. The development of this plan was to support the mission and development of the Auburn Adventist community. The plan was revised, oh, gosh, maybe five years ago now, to allow for other types of uses that would still support the vision and mission of the academy. Now, there's, it's called Oak Vista. It's a development that is in, in, in review with community development staff. That's proposed for that area will include senior housing and multifamily housing, but in the end, the intent of that is to support the mission of the, of the academy. This is the Auburn North Business Area. This includes the area around Fred Meyer. It has its own sign regulations, its own landscaping, a set of requirements, and also pedestrian requirements. This is Lakeland Hills. Lakeland Hills was a master planned community without being a PUD or Planned Unit Development. It was, it's predominantly residential, a lot of subdivisions developed in phases. This is Lakeland Hills South, PUD. It is a formal planned unit development. It is predominantly residential as well. There is a commercial center, say, the town center, and this was also developed in phases. It is subject to, the town center is subject to design standard or sign regulation standards in particular. And then this is the Northeast Auburn Special Planning Area. Most recently, it's the site was the Auburn Valley Drive-In, and now it's Copper Gate. Sorry, there's a lot of copper, copper news going around. And it is mostly built out with multifamily. There is a commercial component that hasn't been completed yet. And that is the end of my very short presentation.
Council, is there any questions? Yes, council member.
Will we be seeing changes for additional more shifting of those named planning areas either into more defined within this iteration of the comp plan? I don't think I understand your question. So for the three different types of special planning areas, identified, designated, or adopted, do we have any new areas identified for this iteration of the comp plan?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. And then within something that's maybe identified, do we see anything getting more defined or shifting between the three categories? So is there anything moving like from this into the designated or into adopted?
I, no, I, I don't believe so. And I can, I can check on that, but I, I don't know, I don't believe so.
It's more of a current state?
Yes. I think, though, in the future, Stuck River Road area will likely, within a couple of years or so, I, I don't know the timeframe, unfortunately, but we will see that moving through the subarea planning process. I'd say within the next couple of years, or again, I don't know the timeframe, but that will probably be, out of all of these, the one that's likely to have the subarea plan fleshed, well, fleshed out, yeah, developed. But I, sorry, I don't know the timing on that.
No.
It's probably years out.
Yeah, I think from the last conversation we had in that property area, there's still mining for a while still, so.
Council, any other? No? Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Next, we'll go to ordinance 6941.
So we'll have Amber Olds come up and give you a quick briefing on the franchise for Fat Beam.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. As Ingrid said, I'm Amber Olds, right-of-way specialist with the Public Works Department. Draft ordinance number 6941 is for franchise agreement number FRN 23-0005 for Fat Beam LLC. Fat Beam provides telecommunication services, capacity, internet access, and wide area network connectivity to education, government, medical centers, and other enterprise customers over their existing fiber optic cables within the city. Their existing facilities were previously approved and authorized under a franchise agreement number 19-09, ordinance number 6715, which is set to expire in June. Fat Beam has applied for a new franchise agreement so that they can continue to operate their existing facilities and serve their customers currently located in Auburn and outside of the city. Their application was reviewed and found to be complete per the city's code requirements. The agreement would be valid for a term of 15 years. The agreement is consistent with the city's standard form agreement and other agreements of this type. And the agreement would cover all public ways within the city so that Fat Beam can continue to build and serve all areas of the city and cover future expansion of their facilities. Future expansion, alterations, repairs, and upgrades, or any improvements to their facilities would be managed through the city's construction permit process, which is a requirement of the franchise agreement. In bringing this agreement forward to city council for review, staff has determined that it meets the code requirements that council must base your decisions on. Public hearing is scheduled for the May 6 city council meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, no question. Councilwoman.
Thank you. How does this compete with the ZIPLI?
So ZIPLI is a new entity. Fat Beam is an existing entity. Fat Beam currently has facilities out there in our right-of-way. Fat Beam serves commercial, their main customer is the Auburn School District. I believe that's their initial customer when they came into Auburn was the Auburn School District. And so they generally just serve the school district and medical, government, whatever other commercial-type facilities, whereas ZIPLI, I know, does serve residential, and they plan to serve residential in the city as well as commercial.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sina, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Police Department, 2023 Annual Report.
Thank you, councilman. Having us here. With the record, I'm Mark Cari, the Chief of Police. I'm with Commander Todd Byers, who will be presenting our pursuit analysis.
Because I have the joy of being the EVOC instructor for the department. So I picked out some, what I thought were kind of attention-getting statistics. We had, if you look at it on its face, we had a 283% increase in the number of pursuits in 2023 than from 2022. I mean, it's relatively explainable because we only had six in 2022 because of the legislative change. So when the legislature relaxed a little bit in '23 and went from probable cause to reasonable suspicion, we had more, we had, sorry?
Reasonable suspicion.
That's what I, that's what I meant, sorry. Long day. I started at like five today, so I'm working my way. So it relaxed a little bit, and we had, we had a higher number of pursuits. We had three in the month of February, three in October. Those were the high months for the number of pursuits that we had during the year. They primarily occur between 2000 or 8:00 PM and 4:00 AM. The time between the hours of 2202 has the highest frequency of pursuits. This held true for '23 also. The initial reason for pursuit changed significantly because in the year prior, we were only able to chase violent felons and people that met the legislative requirement. There's still a big difference. The majority of the suspects that were pursued during 2023 were felony suspects. They were for felony crimes other than being in a stolen vehicle. Because occupying and driving a stolen vehicle was not something that we would pursue for, but we had other, we also had several DUI-related, 30%, 29% of our pursuits were related to criminal traffic, most prevalently DUIs. We had an uptick in the number of miles that we pursued. In 2022, the six reported pursuits averaged basically two-thirds of a mile. We went to 1.93 miles for the average distance of pursuit. And that could have been, there could have been some anomalies in there, and particularly with the type of criminals that we were pursuing, the mileage went up some. And then we will change again, June 6th of this year. The legislature has changed again and basically restored the ability for chief administrators within their own jurisdictions to make a determination based upon the needs of the community, the performance of the officers, and the chief or chief administrator's wishes as to what our pursuit policy is going to be. And gives us a chance, as a police department, to kind of live up to the expectations of the community, whereas before that was kind of taken out of the hands of the administrators of those respective departments. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On your DUIs, about what time are your highest rates of DUIs?
One of those was during the daytime on a weekend, and the other one that I can think of was at night. But I mean, we had one that's in the news right now that was during daylight hours also, primarily, primarily in the evenings, primarily after bar time a lot of times when people are heading home or not heading home, maybe, when they should have, but sometimes that'll start it too.
Any questions from any council? Yes.
Uh, sure. So when Initiative 2113 does become law on June 6th, do we see any shift in approach that we'll have as a city for how we'll handle pursuits, given it appears to be opening the door for us to set policy?
We will modify our pursuit language. It hasn't been determined yet how far we go. The, the way the law change works, it allows basically pursuits for any violation of the law. We have been more restrictive in the past where we put a lot of emphasis on the need to apprehend the violator versus the risk to the public. We will probably go back to something similar to what we had prior to legislative changes, where it's still incumbent upon the officers, the supervisors, to determine basically the probable cause of, or the reason why you're making, initiating a pursuit in the first place, and then a whole bunch of factors will come into play, whether that pursuit is terminated immediately, it's allowed to continue a short distance, or what have you.
Yes. I was going to say, if I remember in the before times, it was something that if a pursuit was to happen, it had to normally go through your internal approval channels, is that right?
We have, we have, after every, after every pursuit, the first-line supervisor sergeant in most cases will complete a blue team report of the pursuit that goes to me, I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure if that's the answer to your question. As far as, like, if it's occurring at that instant, the supervisor still has to acknowledge it because that was not a change in the law. So a supervisor still has to be notified immediately that their, a pursuit has been initiated, they have to acknowledge it, kind of assume authority over the pursuit. So that has not changed at all. So if that's what you meant by normal chain of command, there, there has to be, still be supervisor approval to even continue.
Yeah, that was more the question, so thank you, chief.
I misunderstood.
It's all right, I'm not sure I phrased it, I didn't know if I had the right words for the questions, but chief got what I was trying to understand, so.
Yes, sir. Can you, I didn't, I don't understand what it says about, I'm sorry.
No, I did.
The, what does it mean by performances by the officers? What does that mean? The language you made. If I'm, if I'm a first-line supervisor and I'm going to know the crew that works for me, I'm going to know how they can perform, both physically and behind the wheel of the car, right, and out in the field. If I have an officer that isn't quite as strong in that area, that's brand-new, that doesn't have any experience, I'm much less likely to let that, that organ of mine continue that pursuit, as opposed to somebody that has 10 or 15 years of experience, that's been doing this for a little while, and I know their thought process, right? But that's, that's why the supervisory oversight is so important because, like, me as a commander, as far as what a brand-new officer and what their skill set and their ability is, I'm probably not going to know, but their sergeant, the person that they work for, 40 to 50 hours a week, they're going to know, and so they're the ones that are allowed to make that decision initially and to, and to oversee what's going on out in the field. Thank you. Yes, sir.
On those 17 pursuits, were those young drivers speeding, or were those adults speeding?
That actually, and I didn't bring my report with me, and I apologize for that. We had, we had one driver that was a really kind of an anomaly as, because female and over 40, which subsequently was also one of the DUIs. But that is, that is truly an anomaly. They're usually primarily male, and they're, and they are primarily younger, up to about 25 or 30. So somewhere in that age range between 18, 18 and 30 is the most prevalent age for that to happen.
The, the age range and the sex are in the actual pursuit analysis that was part of the council packet, so that information is in there.
It's not, but I still wanted to hear.
Oh, yeah. When you get to be my age, you don't do things like that.
I don't know.
Theoretically better decisions.
I don't know, I'm called lead foot, you might have to watch it. Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you. Nets will be economic development update.
We still have.
Oh, you still have more?
We still have three more reports to get.
Okay, okay.
I'm going to bring up Commander Sean Fero. Commander Fero is in charge of our Inspection Services Division.
Hello? Everybody got it up? Ready to go? I'm Commander Fero with the Armor Police Department. I think the next slide shows who I am. Inspection Services, essentially, right now, I'm going to talk about CIA, which is commendations, inquiries, and allegations throughout the year of 2023. It's my contact information. So commendations, commendations used to recognize actions or performance by members of the police department who act or perform in a manner that is outstanding or beyond what is normally expected. This is just a comparison between 2020 and all the way to 2023, the total amount of commendations that the department received, both internal and external commendations, letters of commendations, the different medals that we have. As you can see, in 2023, we had two lifesaving medals and two tactical medals. The other medals that, I mean, I can explain what each medal is, it's going to take a while, but we didn't have those in 2023, like, for instance, the Medal of Distinction, several letters of commendation, as you can see. So that's kind of the breakdown. see. So that's kind of the breakdown from 2020 up until 2023, just the difference in the years we're looking at. Internal investigations, so in 2023, we responded to sixty-eight thousand twenty-six incidents via our computer-aided dispatch statistical data. Within those calls in 2023, there were a total of four internal investigations, and of those, two involved misconduct, and there were five total employees that were part of those investigations. So as far as a percentage is concerned, that's point zero zero five percent of the amount of calls that we responded to. This slide here explains the internal investigations again, external sources versus internal sources, how we received information. And in 2023, the total combined amount of internal investigations, just like on the slide before, were four, with two of those having sustained misconduct. So supervisory investigations, these types of investigations are typically, they don't lead to discipline. They are conducted by the supervisor. Just to give you the exact definition of what a supervisor investigation is, it involves a complaint made regarding the quality of service delivery. So any type of complaint, both internal and external, we'll go through our blue team process, which is our internal system where we receive complaints and commendations. It'll go up all the way up the chain to the police, or the, the police, yeah, the chief, and he'll decide kind of what to do with that complaint, and it'll be assigned to a supervisor. So with the amount of cat incidents we had in 2023, again, this is a comparison from 23 to 2020, there were four supervisor inquiries, and two of which were unacceptable performance, thirteen total employees, and employees with unacceptable performance, again, two.
When, do you mind if we ask questions while you're going along?
Sure, go for it.
Okay. When you say involved employees, thirteen of them, what type of involvement were they?
So some of those may be witnesses, or officers that were, let's say, on a call with that specific officer that the complaint is against. So that's typically what, what that means.
And then two came out, results?
Of unacceptable.
Unacceptable, yes. And what happened with those two police officers?
I think we'll get into it later, but usually, like I said, with a supervisor investigation, it's usually a service delivery type issue, and most often than not, and the chief can correct me, those will, and if, if it is misconduct, the officer will receive coaching and counseling. That's the lowest level of, I guess, non-disciplinary way of dealing with it. And then if those types of issues continue, then we can raise the, the type of, whether it becomes discipline or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl. Counselwoman Cheryl Ricks.
Thanks. Before you get too far, I just had a question about lifesaving. So what constitutes lifesaving? Is it, does it include, like, every time you get Narcan and bring someone back, or is it, what is lifesaving to you guys?
Not, not every time.
Okay.
What it, what it is, is it has to be some sort of medical emergency that the actions of the officer is documented that prolong that subject's life. So it's usually, we have to get information from either medic one or a physician, like, if they went to the emergency room, that, let's say, you know, it was applying a tourniquet, you know, Narcan, whatever the case may be, using an AED, that it somehow saved that person's life, verified by a medical professional.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before he moves on? Okay.
All right. Next slide here is allegations. So these are the different types of scenarios that I pulled up for different allegations that we had in 2023. I'm not gonna read them all, but they're right here. You can see that there was a total of fifteen, with five of those having no misconduct or acceptable performance, and then nine of which had misconduct or unacceptable performance, three of which were no conclusion or pending.
And just, just to explain that a little bit more, because the numbers don't quite line up, right? We had four. So there could be multiple violations in each investigation. So there could be, you know, allegation of officer speeding, you know, things of that nature, that there's multiple allegations. So we, we will find violations under each section, if, if there's, you know, unacceptable performance on those. So that's why the numbers will be a little bit different. And then when, when you talk about no conclusion or pending, a lot of times, there may be a investigation that we have started, but the officer has resigned. So we can't conclude that. We are still required now, under state statute, to finish that investigation, and if it was something that, you know, an officer resigned in, like, lieu of termination, or something that could potentially have resulted in discipline, we notify the CJTC, so they will decide whether or not they follow up to look at the officer's certification.
That's good to know, because I've often wondered, when somebody leaves our police office, our department, and they go to another city, do you give records or recommendations or anything like that, if anything happened in our, in our city, that they did take with them?
So we're required to notify the, the State Criminal Justice Training Commission.
That's where it goes.
And then, you know, if it's another agency is doing a thorough background, that will come up in their background.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
All right, collisions. So again, a breakdown from 2020 to 2023, preventable versus, or collisions, and of those collisions, which ones were preventable. So in 2023, we had thirteen collisions that were deemed to be due to driver inattention, three of which were improper backing, one was other, and seven, the other driver was at fault.
Just to clarify on collisions, we require our officers to report, even if there's no damage, if they are backing up, they say something, they're required to report that just because sometimes damage is not visible on a car, and maybe, and we don't want, and we know to all of a sudden service our vehicle, find damage that we don't know about. And so officers are very good in informing us, hey, I pulled out a lot, lot too fast, I did this. So we treat it as a collision, and we'll look into it. A lot of times, that collision results in extra training that year for the, for the officers involved.
All right. So just continuing on collisions, twelve officers in 2023 received coaching and counseling due to the collision that they were involved in, zero written reprimands or suspensions or dismissals in comparison to other years. Action taken, combined discipline for misconduct, whether from an internal or supervisor investigation. In 2023, you can see it's a light blue here, we had six incidents that had coaching and counseling, one written reprimand, no suspensions, demotions, and two of which had no commitment. That's again, from internal investigations or supervisor investigations. I'll read this. To ensure that our investigations are unbiased, there are times when an outside agency may be asked to investigate serious allegations of misconduct made against agency staff, especially those that may be of a criminal nature. This provides Auburn citizens with confidence and allows for unbiased transparency in your actions, activities, and decisions made by the Auburn Police Department. In 2023, there was one allegation of criminal misconduct investigated by the PIA Police Department, and one allegation of sexual harassment investigated by a city hired firm. Both investigations were not sustained. Any additional questions?
Okay, counsel. Any questions? Counselwoman Paul.
So, reading through this and looking at the trend data, where we see, you know, an increase in collisions, going from, you know, sub-twenty to over twenty, and maybe because I also see the vouchers for all the costs to do those fixes. When I see that compared with, you know, what the outcome is being more heavily in that coaching space, you know, is coaching sufficient to get that number down when it comes to things that are, you know, preventable, like inattention or other areas?
We hope so. A lot of the, the trend upward is, as I've talked to the council in prior meetings, is that we have a very young police force. They are still learning, basically, indifferent from driving a normal vehicle to a police vehicle, especially if you're responding code, things of that nature. And a lot of times, these are training issues that we can correct through additional EVOC training. We, we just went through a, we actually worked with the school district, used a school parking lot to go through slow-speed course, did some high-speed braking, so officers get used to that feel in their, in their vehicles. That also goes into kind of the pursuit. As, you know, any changes in our pursuit policy, we have to realize we're now talking about new officers, and that's where Commander Byers had talked about that, that experience and trust about allowing a pursuit to even occur in the first place with a very young staff, so.
Okay. And then, same in the other area with the allegations, I think it's page seven, where there were nine outcomes that did fall into misconduct space. What were the actions there as far as discipline? Is that included in the combined discipline space?
Right, am I on the right slide here?
Yeah. So for this one with the seven that were noted as unacceptable performance, what was the resulting discipline?
I think that that would be in my complete report. I don't have that information right now, but I can get it to you.
Any other questions? Tracy, did you?
No.
Oh, okay. You just cleaned your throat. Thank you. I guess that's it?
No.
No? Okay, then keep going. Keep going. You're done with this one, though, right?
This one I.
Okay. What's this?
Use of force.
This is the use of force.
Agent report from 2023.
So use of force, 2023. Again, this is me. So contacts versus use of force incidents. In 2023, we had, and this is just like the last report, sixty-eight thousand twenty-six contacts. So it's important to understand that there are times when it takes two or more officers using force on one suspect to gain compliance. Get suspect into custody. When that occurs, each officer is required to complete a force report, which generates multiple, which then generates multiple force reports for one incident. This table just depicts the rations in comparison to force incidents. So I'm comparing in this data right here, 2022 to 2023. Let's see. So fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty cases were drawn, and two thousand six hundred and eighty-three arrests, two thousand eighty-seven bookings. This shows a ratio comparison from 2022 regarding force reports that were completed. Again, some of the same type of categories. So point two three of content, percent of contacts resulted in a use of force report. So point two three percent of the amount of calls that we responded to in 2023 caused a use of force report to be conducted. Complaints regarding force in 23, we had no allegations of inappropriate and/or excessive applications of force, whether it be internal or external sources. All use of force instances were reviewed. None were determined to be excessive or outside of our policy. Table three below shows that there were zero incidents that resulted in excessive force, and then the other table reflects the same numbers and percentage of allegations, which is zero in 23. Pretty simple there. Zero allegations in comparison to the other years. So this is gonna show force types that can be used by an officer, shows the number of times that that type of force was used in 2023. You can see here that forty-six, which is a officer, a takedown maneuver, was the highest type of force used in 2023. And it looks like counter-joint, and then taser and verbal were the second highest.
Commander Fero?
Yep.
Can you explain what other is at 23? Between open hand strike and verbal? It's right there between, yeah, open hand strike and.
So usually, when it's listed as other, it's, the officer did something, they went hands-on with a person, but they can't quite describe how they got him into custody, whether, you know, they, like, tried an arm bar, but that wasn't quite what they did. You know, they went, maybe grabbed him by the shirt or something, and there's just no way to categorize what, what they did. But because they put hands on the person, or there was a complaint of pain, they're required to do a force report.
And just to piggyback on that, one of those may be just simply handcuffing. If you handcuff somebody and they complain of pain, that requires a use of force.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair. Counselmember Ricks.
Along with that, what is the difference between the pit and the vehicle?
So pit is a pursuit immobilization technique, and, I mean, I'm not the EVOC guru like Todd was earlier, but it's essentially utilizing your vehicle at a specific speed to take that vehicle out of service during a pursuit. Whereas using a vehicle is, it may not be at a higher rate of speed, it may be kind of like a bump in the back bumper, to utilize whatever force is necessary to affect the lawful purpose intended.
It, so the vehicle would differ from an intentional vehicle strike. So an intentional vehicle strike is when you're not in a position to do a pit. So you, you're striking at a certain speed, so not above twenty-five miles per hour, an unoccupied portion of the car, to either, like, pin it against a curb, block it in. So when we talk about vehicles, a lot of those are due to a post-pit maneuver, where you're, once you pit the vehicle, you have other vehicles coming in, making contact with the front and rear, so that vehicle cannot drive out. And so, because it's, it is making contact, it can be jarring, you know, the person inside, we, we do require them to list it.
Can you give an example of, it's a pretty high number, verbal? That's one of the highest ones on there.
Verbal's, so we have officers document as they fill out their, their reports. Did you try to tell them, did you try to gain compliance just by verbal warnings? Like, don't do this, I am going to tase you. If it was feasible, did you give a warning? And so that's what that document, is the attempt to document it when it's feasible, before moving to something else.
Got it. Thank you.
So verbal is technically not a type of force, but our tracking mechanism is there to ensure, you know, try and see, did you at least try to gain compliance first before you went? try and see, did you at least try to gain compliance first before you went?
Some type of physical force.
Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselmember Baldwin?
For the firearm display, I think that that can be pretty intimidating for a lot of folks to see that or to have that happen. What are the types of scenarios that we had where firearm display was associated?
Well, those types of incidents, if you're going to utilize your firearm or pull out your firearm, it's usually a type of incident that may lead to deadly force, so a high-risk incident, like. I could give you just generic examples, if that's what you'd like to hear, but I can provide specific data. Again, it's not, I know it's not on the chart, but anytime you're responding to a call where a firearm is involved, or if you see a lethal threat, typically the officers have been trained to take out their firearm. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're pointing their firearm at somebody. Well, I'm sorry.
Before you misspeak, so that category is actually if they're pointing their firearm.
Yeah.
So that is considered a use of force by law and by the courts. And so if they actually point their firearm at somebody, they're required to report that. So it could be a subject is armed with a weapon, some incident, you know, that causes an officer to actually come up on target with somebody.
Okay, any other questions?
Effective versus non-effective force used in 23. I'll just let you kind of look at the data there. Verbal appears to be, or is the, was the least effective in 2023, has its sole utilization of type of force, and again, Chief explained what that means. Force resulting in injury comparing to the previous years. So out of one hundred and sixty-three force reports, there were ninety-four suspects injured, twenty-three officers injured, so fifty-seven percent is the total of suspects injured in 2023.
So when you say injured, did they end up in the hospital, or?
That doesn't necessarily mean in the hospital, that could just be a cut or a scrape.
Or a complaint of pain.
Yeah, or a complaint.
So anybody we use force on, we document, we take photographs of them, even if they're just, you know, my elbow hurts. We take a picture of them overall, their elbow, wherever they're complaining that something's hurting, we photograph them. If there's an injury, even though we may not have caused it, we document that as well.
Any questions?
Continuing. So, 2023 is the, not as, well, the darker blue, I guess. These are the injury types throughout the years. So looking at this, laceration, actually, non-apparent or complaint of pain is the highest. With laceration being probably the second highest here, just looking at the graph. Time of day, so use of force incidents by time of day. This graph shows that you're looking at probably between the hours of twenty-three hundred and zero-one hundred are the highest times of when force has been used in 2023, or was used in 2023. Same type of graph, just looking at the different years. So reasons for force, again, comparing the years prior. Attempting to escape was the highest. In 2023, is eighty-eight was our total, the second most, refusing commands. Resistant?
Oh, sorry. Counselmember Baldwin? On the refusing commands, do you have a policy in place for, you know, how many commands or how much time lapse before escalation?
So there's no specific policy, because every situation is different. So, by law, we are trying, we're, we try to de-escalate situations. A lot of times, people do not comply with that. We are required to give warnings when feasible, prior to going hands-on with somebody. There are occasions that, just because of the circumstances, there's no time for that warning that, you know, you do this, or I'm going to do this.
Well, but here's the question, if the reason for force is that they've refused the command, that means that you've issued it, at least, right, from a logic standpoint? So in those scenarios where they've refused it, do we have any sense of review in that space? Because it's, appears to be a decent percent of the overall incidents where force was used for our approach as a department. So do we have any trends that you're seeing in that review for how quickly that happens, or any patterns that are emerging?
Well, like, the overall patterns, I think that would be prevalent, are the fact that out of sixty-eight thousand CAD incidents, we use force, you know, point zero-zero-five percent of the time. So the majority of the time, I think that was the number. So officers, the majority of incidents that involve arrests that we have, they're not requiring force because officers are talking to subjects, they're gaining compliance. And so, you know, I can't give you specific numbers on the, you know, officers are waiting five minutes before they try to go hands-on with somebody, and everything is situational when it comes to that type of event.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you have another?
Well, mainly in that, on page three, to your point, the point-two-four percent for the overall response rate where force may be used, but in the case where it gets to an actual booking, we're looking at one in twelve versus one in twenty, which is what it was in 2022. So that seems to be a much higher incident, going from four-point-nine-eight percent to seven-point-two-four. And so, I think that's the question where when we see, take that one out of twelve versus one out of twenty from last year to this year, and look at that reason for force, you know, we also see the increase in attempts to escape, and, but when I see that as part of refusing commands, I'm curious where, what that experience is for officers, as far as I've issued the command, what's that, that wait before it goes to force?
So the refusing commands isn't always the only thing that is done. So, I don't know how to explain this, but, so when, when an officer is taking someone into custody, and they provide, you know, hey, so-and-so, put your hands behind your back, you're under arrest, and they go hands-on to put them in, under arrest, then there may be muscular tension, which is, and then they may try to pull away, and then they may say, hey, stop that, or I'm gonna take you to the ground. And they refuse, they do something else, it's, it's just another portion of that use of force, it's just a subsection of that force, it's not always just refusing commands. Okay, so resistance during force encounters, comparing prior years. The highest was muscular tension, tension and pulling away, and this is what the subject actions are, with the second highest being eighty-three, which is the subject attempting or trying to flee. And, see the rest of the numbers there. So, in, when an officer decides to use force, they, they conduct an assessment, and this graph here shows their numbers, showing their assessment of the subject in comparing two prior years. One of the highest in this graph here is that the subject was agitated, second most being under some sort of alcohol or drug use. And then, calm was probably, it is, and according to the graph, the third highest here in comparison to the others.
Any questions?
Demographics, twenty-three, in 2023, race. The highest, and this is involving the subject that was being taken into custody or force was being used against. The highest was, the second highest, black, third highest, Hispanic, then Asian Pacific Islander, other unknown, and then last was Native Americans. And then looking to the right, you have gender. So male is, in 2023, was the highest, with one hundred and thirty-six, female thirty, and then other unknown, five. Pretty similar to the prior years.
Those women that are arrested, are they under the influence of any type of alcohol or drugs?
I would have to look at every force report to get that data, but if that's something you're interested in, I can probably pull it up for you.
Any questions on that? No?
And that is it. Get out of your way. Thank you.
So I'm just gonna briefly, just the highlights of our overall annual report. We kind of broke it down in specific categories to make it a little bit more easier. The, the annual report was provided in the council packet, it's fairly long, so I just wanted to go through the highlights. As, as we already spoke to prior, we had a little over sixty-eight thousand incidents last year. It was down about just a little over a thousand from prior years. You'll see the, the big trend from 2019, the eighty-six thousand, as we move to more online reporting. That's why our CAD calls are going down. One of the reasons our CAD calls go down, because most, a lot of those have moved to the online reporting module that we have in the city. Average response times, they improve for our Priority One calls, those are the highest priority, but they are increasing in every other category. A lot of that is due to staffing levels at the police department. But we try to keep Priority One as close to four minutes as possible. A lot of what happens is with our staffing that we have on the street, they will divert from a call they're on to go either take primary or assist on a higher priority call as needed. And so that's why you see those other numbers going up. When we assign felony cases, out of those sixty-eight thousand calls that we had, we had just under five thousand total felony cases that we assigned to our detective units. And when we break those down by each unit, our major crimes unit, that's our homicides, robberies, things of that nature, they had just over thirteen hundred. Our most active is our property crimes unit with thirty-three hundred calls, and then our SIU unit, which handles drug investigations, vice, gang-related activity. They do help with the other property crimes as well, but those types of calls are still categorized under property crimes. When we talk about person crimes, we break, break it down into four big categories. We had a decrease in the number of homicides this last year, we went from thirteen to eight, but a fairly large increase in reported robberies in the city. We had, during the course of 2023, we had several robbery crews that were active, not just in Auburn, but they were active throughout the valley and into Pierce County as well. And so periodically, you would make arrests on those cases, and, but the numbers still went up quite a bit. Sexual assaults was up slightly, but then aggravated assaults overall went down just a little bit, you know, reduced by six, so not, not a whole lot, pretty consistent with 2022 overall, except for the amount of robberies.
Yes, so in the, you said the sexual assault is, I mean, continues to climb. Is the calls that are from this, are they also, I know that you're probably gonna say you're gonna have to find out, but anything from the high schools, anything from the schools?
Not like in the schools, they are, you know, there's some calls that were reported through the school district that we find out about. Those are very rare. Our calls would usually come in, a lot of them are family-type sexual assaults that will come in that way, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Property crimes. Overall, burglaries dropped slightly, fraud and forgery is dropping, our vehicle thefts, you know, like the rest of the state and King County, increased again, we're up to just over fifteen hundred. Vehicle thefts this last year, and general larcenies, those, those are felony thefts, things of that nature. And then thefts from vehicles, still dropping. You know, one explanation for that, that they're going to, is they're now taking the whole vehicle. But that's, you know, it's, unfortunately, well, fortunately, I think we'll get some tools back after June to try and combat some of the vehicle theft to make it less enticing to those in the community to take somebody else's vehicle.
So are they finding these in the pawn shops or anywhere? The tools, or, they steal?
Tools.
Is that what you said? Or vehicles? They're stealing the whole vehicle.
We do recover a lot of stolen items from pawn shops, because they record serial numbers, and we have various databases, they'll notify us. And then our total arrested persons, from a high in 2019, we're about twenty, a little over twenty-six hundred this last year, with bookings just over two thousand. The difference there is that the officers, if they choose to, and the circumstances call for it, they can release individual out in the field with a citation to appear for a court date. A lot of the arrests, you know, were, you know, the high in, in 2019 can be attributed, you know, and then the drop, a lot of it still has to do, as far as with bookings into jail, with investigations, number of police officers on the street, a number of proactive encounters that we're able to do. All those can be factors in why our arrest rate has dropped, it did go up from last year. And so we, I think I've talked about it, when we talked about SCORE before. We do have the highest number of bookings still in SCORE. We do have the highest average daily population out of all the owner cities in SCORE. So, you know, the whole, we try not, you know, the arrest is kind of the last option we'd like to see. And then I threw this in here, just so you can see the amount of training that our officers go through. Majority of this is mandated state training, that's required every, every year, or every couple of years, depending on the specific state requirement. So in 2023, once COVID started opening up again, that's why you see the numbers drop drastically in 2021. A lot of things are still closed down for COVID, so there wasn't as much outside training. A lot of it was just internal training that we're able to get our officers to. And so once those outside trainings have now opened up a little bit more, we're able to get our officers more to the, some outside training, like homicide investigation. to get our officers more to the some outside training, like homicide investigations, specific training that some people may be interested in to help with their assignment, things of that nature. So our our trend is going up for those training hours. And that's kind of the end of the annual report. There is a lot of information in the actual document, the annual report, but those were some of the highlights that drew your attention.
Any questions? Councilmember chief?
Thank you. Chief, I went through quite a bit of it in the packet overnight last night. It takes a lot of work, so a big thank you to you and your leadership team for putting together something especially, I'm speaking broadly here, for a new council member to really understand and digest. So what you put in that was remarkable, so thank you.
I second. And they love my photo on the report, thank you. I have to mention it after I'm retired from volunteer.
I also would like to say thank you to all of you that came up and gave your report. It was very to the point and just thank you for everything you brought to us. Yes, council, councilmember.
Thanks. I think I'm just sitting here still chewing on the use of force report. And in particular, the area where we were looking at the officer assessment of the individual. And we have that big increase in a situation where that person has been identified as having a calm demeanor. And so I'm curious, how do we go from a space where that individual is calm to a need to use force on them? So can you help me understand that?
So that's just all based on the subject's compliance. So if there's a need to arrest an individual, even though they may be calm, they may not go along with the arrest. And so there could be static resistance that starts coming out. That is just the initial officer assessment of that person when they initiated either contact or the force of what, you know, what the officer believed, their, you know, their mindset was. So that can rapidly change, but that's just the initial demeanor that the officer viewed. Thank you.
Okay, next on the on the list is economic development. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Jen Francis. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city of Auburn. And this is Emerson Volker, who is our newest partner, and he's the Economic Development Coordinator. So these are our pictures. So this is who the folks come to see us when they have questions about their business or potentially putting in a new business in the city. This is the graph. So tonight we'll be going through a little bit of introductory to economic development, a little bit of update for quarter one, so what we've accomplished during quarter one. But also, some of the council members are new, and I haven't had the opportunity to come and introduce myself and what we do in the Economic Development Department. So here we go. Economic Development, we report to the Community Development Director, who is currently Acting Director, is Jason Crum. Then it comes down to me, Economic Development Manager, and then Emerson, of course. But then we have branches out and that go to our partners. So we have our downtown partners, and that's the Downtown Auburn Cooperative and the BIA. So the Downtown Auburn Cooperative is nonprofit entity that we work closely with to make sure that we're supporting the businesses that are in the downtown area. So the BI area, the Downtown Urban Core. The BIA is a board that's been put together that are building owners, business owners that are in that area. They form a board and they vote on what to do with the money that's been designated to them. And thus far, for the last two years, ninety thousand dollars has been budgeted for the BIA board to be able to do projects and to support other things that are happening in the downtown area. The other arm that we have is our tourism and marketing. Our partners for that is the Chamber. So the Auburn Area Chamber is one of our partners that we work. And then in tourism, it's LTAC, which is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And so both of those are critical to tourism, which a tourist is someone that is fifty miles or more away from the city when they come in and spend the night in hotels. That's how we collect money. And then the LTAC Board is a group of people that are in that industry. So it's going to be representatives from Emerald Downs, from the hotels, from our Parks Department. That's who's going to represent folks for the tourism board. So this is a statement that's out of our current comprehensive plan in the Economic Development Chapter, and I won't do a lot of reading tonight, but I do really feel that this is an important statement for what our vision statement is. So Auburn is a community that has a robust and diverse economy where businesses seek to locate, people desire to visit, and residents enjoy a range of commercial offerings. Businesses that locate in Auburn find it easy to enter the marketplace, encounter ideal conditions for their long-term success, and become rooted and involved in the community. And then visitors continue to return to Auburn because of its high-quality natural resources, parks, public spaces, and commercial attractions. And then lastly, residents choose to live in Auburn because of the diverse family, because of the diverse family wage employment opportunities and access to entertainment, restaurants, retail, and services. So that's part of what our Economic Development Chapter says right now that's in the comprehensive plan, and that's a goal for us to have as an Economic Development Division. So our downtown engagement. Economic Development Division works really closely with the downtown businesses and the property owners of those buildings that those businesses are in. We are the primary point of contact for those businesses to be able to reach out to us if they have questions about expanding, if they have questions about how to get a business license, if they have questions about is that property zoned correctly for us? A lot of times they start out with us. We may not have the whole answer to their question, but a lot of them start out in our office. And then downtown right now consists of roughly two hundred and twenty businesses in that area. So some of the things that we've been doing in downtown, this is part of our Q one update, is that we've installed new banners. And this will just be a warning to everybody. If you wear a T-shirt around me and it's got a great slogan on it, we're going to use that. And so Meet Me Downtown was a T-shirt that I saw on councilmember rakes, and it just kind of brought me to that feeling of we should definitely have people meet us downtown. Like, that's a great feeling to have, that people are like, hey, I let's go to lunch, Meet Me Downtown. That's just a great saying. So we've taken that and Meet Me Downtown Auburn, dine, shop, create, explore our downtown. So we're really happy that those banners have been installed, and those will be up for a few months as we transition through spring and summer. So what is our BIA? I talked a little bit about the BIA receives ninety thousand dollars annually from our city BNO tax. The board members that we currently have on there right now are John Rottle, Giovanni de Cuatro, and Giovanni owns the Rainbow Cafe, and they're going to be celebrating their ninety-fifth anniversary this year. Bill Cowart, Ronnie Roberts, and Darren Jones, all business owners within our community. The BIA board members meet on the second Thursday of the month from one o'clock to two o'clock. That's an open meeting. We welcome everyone. Some of the downtown projects that the BIA has contributed to most recently, about a hundred thousand dollars in projects in the downtown. One of the downtown planters, which just got replanted here over spring cleanup, spring spring clean, sorry, thank you. Sweet, thank you. Murals in the downtown, downtown lighting, and then next up is going to be our bike racks that we're going to focus on. And the DAC has been really critical to that partnership and making that happen.
Councilmember Taylor.
Jen, thank you. The murals in downtown, are those in collaboration with the Arts Commission?
They haven't been. They are a standalone project that the Downtown Auburn Cooperative has been able to work with building owners. They have to sign an agreement with the DAC. They pick artists, they go through renderings, but it's not something that's been working through the city, other than the BIA is funding those projects to happen.
Is there a possibility that can be worked through the Arts Commission?
I mean, that is certainly something that can be considered if that's the partnership that they want to do. One of the reasons that we ended up partnering with the DAC is the amount of time that it takes for the Arts Commission to go through that process and to find the business owners and to find the building and then to pay a a specific wage that's dictated by the city. We found that the partnership with the DAC has been extremely helpful, kind of fast-tracking those things to go. I absolutely agree that it's fantastic when we have partnerships with city departments and organizations. It's great. It just was not moving forward in a fast pace. So we came up with the idea of partnering with the DAC.
Is there an opportunity to include the Arts Commission in that, though?
I think that that absolutely could be something that's on the table. At this point, the BIA has funded the DAC for that money, but I don't think that it's something where we strongly encourage that to happen, but it's not something that we haven't we've said no to. It's something we can look into for you. Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely. The next up, we have the Downtown Auburn Cooperative, which is our partner downtown. The DAC works really closely with the city and the BIA to support downtown businesses and the surrounding area. So these are just some of the pictures that we have from projects that happened last year and this year. So planters, this was last year's planters. The lighting that went up is solar lighting that's been installed. This is all DAC. And then the murals, and this happens to be the DAC office, they've done a beautiful mural outside their door. And then we have the downtown networking events, which is the mix and mingle. This is the most recent one that we had, which was a ribbon cutting for Chaska, the brand-new Indian cuisine restaurant that was there. I'm pretty sure I saw most of you there, and we all were able to taste some of that wonderful food that they have. And we move on to the Auburn Area Connect, which is the Chamber of Commerce. They are a great partner of ours that issues the magazines, the Auburn Area Connector. They run the Leadership Institute in partnership with Green River College. The Auburn Area Connect has their Spotlight Awards Gala that is also coming up very soon. The Auburn Area Connect Candidates Forum, so they will host the Candidates Forum in this area. They have a connect tournament at our golf course or Washington National, which is every other year. And then they also are folks that partner with us for ribbon cuttings and celebrations that we have with our businesses. One of the things that we really spotlight, that we partner with the Chamber with, is our Business Connect events. And these are held every month on the first Wednesday of the month from three o'clock to five o'clock. And these are just a few pictures of those moments that we've had with those business owners. So the ribbon coming cutting at White Willow, one is up at the Red Canoe Credit Union, and then this is with the Emerald City Fashion Store. This is the third picture. But what we found is that every month we'll have somewhere between forty and fifty people come. It's not always the same forty or fifty people. It's probably the same thirty people. And then we have five or ten new people that we've never seen before, and they've bought a friend, or they've bought another business owner, or they're a business owner in federal way, but they're looking at our community for potential new location. And we're so excited to see new people coming and going in and out of this group, and we're hoping that it grows. But it also causes attraction to the city of Auburn to be able to have a new business, their new business inside the city limits.
Are you sending invitations to the councilmembers to attend those?
So the the invitation is, it goes out on an email blast. I believe all of those councilmembers are on that email blast. And it's something that we go through. I think they go through the events page as well, so it's on our events page. And I think we have to also sign up that if there is a quorum of councilmembers, an email will also go out.
Handles all of the invitations that you receive. Thank you so much.
Okay, one of our other partners is Green River College SBC, so the Small Business Center. And we were lucky enough to have them host our last Business Connect event. And we are also very lucky to have Taryn Hornby be the connection for the city of Auburn. She was given an award, a national award for her work that she's done in our community. So our partnership with the Green River College Small Business Center is that they assist businesses being able to find funding and expansion. They teach a whole class on how to do government contracting. They talk about how to buy and sell businesses. They give classes on that. They really give classes on marketing, and then also how to be an entrepreneur and how to start up your business and have this business management. So we're really happy to have them as one of our partners. And the other one that I'd like to mention tonight is the Greater Seattle Partners. So this last year, at the end of the year, we were able to meet with folks that the GSP, the Greater Seattle Partnership, put together. And what they did was they had a site selector nationally, a national company come in from North Carolina. And we kind of applied to have that person come to one of the sites within the city limits. And that site that we picked was what they call the old GSA site or the new IRG site. So we were, we actually kind of won and had them come out and tour this location. People got to go through two or three of the buildings that they have right now, see the beautiful inside of these structures, kind of see what it looks like before and after some of these improvements had happened. You'll see there's me and Obed, and then our our real estate agent and that representative from North Carolina that came out, gave us some really good feedback. Like, what do we need to know when we take someone out to do an inquiry about having a business at a location? One of the things that we are, they are just really, really particular about is the amount of power that they can get at this location, the water pressure that they can get at this location, and then how quickly we can have it. How can, how fast can we get gas, additional gas and electricity to these sites that will help for another aerospace industry type of business to come there? Then we have tourism. So let's, a little bit about the benefits of tourism. So it injects dollars in from outside of Auburn into our local economy. So that's people coming from out of town, so fifty miles away or further into our city to stay in hotels. So if they stay in a hotel, the city of Auburn gets a tax, and it's the lodging tax. The city receives a lodging tax. It helps to cultivate civic pride. The community benefits, the community benefit to the Auburn residents, so there's more people that are coming to our parades or going to our city events. There's a positive impact for shoulder season. September to May can kind of be a slower season for our hotels in this area. So when we're having advertising tourism in our area, it helps those hotels to continue to be successful, even when it may not be the height for their season. And then it ensures economic vitality of Auburn businesses. And that's because they come here, they stay in our hotels, they eat at our restaurants, they shop at our shops, they go to our parks. It's just really a benefit to our city when they do that. One of the partnerships that we continue through twenty twenty-four is our partnership with the Outlet Collection, and I've talked a little bit about this before. And this is the entrance by the Fieldhouse USA. You walk into that area and you will see Explorer Auburn, our big logo around the play area. You're going to see pictures of our businesses, not inside the mall, but back to Main Street. So they're going to push them to Main Street, Lakeland Hills, Lee Hills. So we're advertising for businesses not inside this mall. And that, we feel like, is a really special relationship that we have with the Outlet Collection, that they're allowing us to advertise for businesses not in their location is kind of just a big surprise and really supportive of them to be able to. But they understand that they have someone, they have Fieldhouse USA that has people there for two, three days. They don't have two to three days of entertainment, right, in that mall area. So they're happy to allow us to campaign and market for other businesses that we have in the city limits. We're also going to be renewing our contract with Pacific Raceways, and we're ready to go. It's, we'll do the driver's night, so we'll do the sign signing event out at Dave and Buster's again. It worked out really well to have that parking and all of that space available to us. You'll see the chamber with our, the booth for Explorer Auburn, Stay Golden, out at the actual races for the NHRA race. We're really excited to partner with Jason and John up there. It's John Ramsey and Jason Fiorito. And it's just a really fun event. If you have not been to the eight NHRA races, I strongly encourage you to come. But I also think you should bring your AirPlex. Like, it's it's loud, so be ready for that.
The mayor said she had a fantastic time last time she was there.
Always do. She had to give an award away, I believe.
Oh, nice.
And then we have a partnership with the Don's Place. So there's a good neighbor agreement in place that says that once a quarter, the folks from Compass Housing will meet with the businesses, Economic Development, and the Chamber, to talk about what the impact is to the neighboring businesses around the Compass Housing project that is called Don's Place. So they are very gracious. They host us. We come in, they're allowed to give us a report out of how many folks are living in the housing at this point. They tell us if They tell us if they've had any concerns that they've seen. Beautiful grand opening where I'm sure most of you were at. And then gave several speeches, and obviously the mayor was there, gave a speech. But it's just one of those places where we braced ourselves for, was this going to impact the businesses that are nearby there in a negative way? And we have gone to meeting after meeting, quarter after quarter, and the group of businesses that were concerned, and I think we started out with twenty-five people at the first meeting, has gotten smaller and smaller and smaller. And most of the time, I really feel like that's to its detriment, that we're seeing less and less. But in this case, it truly means there's not this concern of the folks that are being there. They're not, they're not in the point where they're impacting the neighbors, the business community, in a negative way. Otherwise, it would have grown. It would be more business owners that are coming with bigger concerns, with folks that are staying at Don's Place. So it's, in this one case, it's good that the meeting is getting smaller instead of getting larger. Although we love to see the businesses there, just so we can get some feedback, but it's okay. There's been a lot of talk about the Comprehensive Plan update, and you'll hear from Economic Development here in the next few months, and we'll come and tell you a little bit more about how we plan to get to some of our goals within the Economic Development Division. But we wanted to let you know, it's on the top of our list of things that are happening in 2024. Lastly, our goal in Economic Development is to have programs that should be viewed as a way to shape the character of the city's economic future. And that's something that we're really planning on. We're having brainstorming sessions. We're working with partners to be able to fill storefronts, to be able to have events that downtown folks want to come to, but all of City of Auburn really wants to come and participate in. Questions?
I've come loaded.
It's great. I'm so excited.
Economic Community Development is my jam. I love this stuff. Okay, so you, going back to your Green River and the Small Business Center, is that essentially a small business accelerator program that they have involved?
I'm not sure that I would call it an accelerator. It's more just an opportunity to have classes, so classes as a whole, that talk about how to kickstart your business. Then it offers one-on-one counseling, so you can go in and meet with them. They're not going to link you up with financing. They're not going to create the financial plan for you. But they are going to work with you to be able to have those conversations that you should be having before you open your business, and that's the partnership that we have with them.
Is that nonprofit?
Well, it's through the school, so we do fund them with grant money. So it's something that we in the past have helped in the financing of it, as well as other jurisdictions are also participating in that. So it's, it's the college.
Council member.
I have a question. And when we went to Don Place, it was a good opportunity to see the Pie Bakery, which I didn't know is located here in Auburn for three years. My question to you, do we have fund or something to create website where we put all the small business?
I am so happy that you asked that question. We are in the process of finding out whether or not we receive a grant from the Port of Seattle. And with a portion of that money, what we'd really like to do is update specifically the Economic Development website. And that is going to be something that we'll go and do an RFQ, RFP for. And then we're going to look at what some other jurisdictions are doing and how they're promoting not just the small businesses, all of the businesses, but for them to be able to have a space where it's easy to find folks that are, that have a small business, such as Pie Style. I mean, I would love to see Pie Style triple in size and be able to go and eat lunch there and grab a quick morning breakfast there. So Oksana is the owner of Pie Style. We meet with her often. So it, it's a great opportunity for us to say, when you're ready to grow, we hope it's soon, and let us help you find that place.
Can you say something? Yes, so I hope you want to remember, because it was a new, new news to me. I find it out last year, after I went to pull up the wall up spur to fix my post, that we have a store here, everybody, Art Tree Store in northeast Auburn. Everybody will come to it, and they have Art Tree range on site. I didn't know. I drove all the way and they sent me back, which, that's why I wish we have a space where we have all the great small business we have in Auburn.
I'm going to take that advice, and I, I'm going to take that suggestion and see what we can do on our new landing page specifically to assist in small business promotion and marketing.
There you go. You got a, you got a new job to do. Yes, council member Taylor.
Jen, what's her relationship with White River Theatre?
Okay, so Live Nation will be hosting our next Business Connect Event. It'll be at the Muckleshoot Resort in their pool area, so brand-new resort. They will be hosting, unfortunately, I think it's, we have our events on Wednesdays, and Friday is the kickoff of their concert season. They were like, we really want to host you. We don't want to have you here while we're trying to prep this area. So they worked in conjunction with the Muckleshoot Resort. So they're going to be the, a partner to, they're going to host the Connect Event at the new pool area. And we feel like we have a good relationship with the folks at Live Nation, and we look forward to them being our hosts coming very soon, like, two weeks away.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have anything to say or give to us?
She did a great job.
She always does.
I'm excited to start. You know, it's, it's my fifth day today, so I'm absorbing, observing, you know, and doing everything I can to help, so.
She always does a good job.
That's good to hear.
Gives us everything, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, community wellness, housing policy update.
Yep, and that is going to be presented tonight by Josh Steiner, Senior Long Range Planner.
Okay, Jim, it's all yours.
All right. Good evening. My name is Josh Steiner, Senior Planner in Community Development. I'm here to speak on behalf of Jeff Tate, who couldn't make it tonight, on housing policy and kind of where we're at as far as implementing some of our housing policy into our comprehensive plan. So general outline of what we're discussing. So there's been a couple phases of the development of our, our proposed policy and incorporation into our comp plan over the last few years, including an inventory, an assessment of our current housing stock, a couple planning studies, housing action plans. And then, you know, as we continue to move forward, we, we learn more and more from the state as to what some of our requirements will be. And then, and then ultimately, this last step, we land at the development of the actual comprehensive plan. So Phase One, as Jeff's calling it, it was started in 2020. This was funded through a commerce grant and is a subregional partnership with other South King County cities, such as Kent Federal Way, Renton, and Burian. And it's coordinated through Skip, the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, who's also housed here at the city. It's been a good opportunity. I've been part of that group for the last two years to share information as we all kind of move forward with our comprehensive plans and to develop regional, subregional policies that we can be, so we can be consistent with one another as we address housing issues. This, this particular project, one of the outcomes of this was some data collection regarding affordable housing, both to understand the types and locations of affordable housing within the community that are registered, but also non-registered. So naturally occurring affordable housing. So collecting all that data and then putting it into an inventory, which ultimately ended up being a map that's pretty useful. It actually shows like the dots, and it shows the locations, sliders. You can kind of, the tricky part about with, with, with naturally occurring is it's, it's naturally occurring, so they're not, it's affordable at a certain level, so there's, it's sort of a squishy, squishing map. So they had some consultants help them out with that, with that model. It's, it's really useful, and we definitely took advantage of that as we were thinking about housing and the comprehensive plan. The second phase of, of the development is a couple of planning studies. This first one is Housing Action Plan, which was initiated in 2021, also funded through a commerce grant. This, this project was Auburn-specific, so while the Skip work is at a regional level, this, we were looking at housing specifically within Auburn. And it created a kind of a, a variety of housing choices within the city. So, and, and policy considerations to, to implement those different, those various housing choices. The focus really was on how does the city increase the overall supply, the, the housing stock within the city, and what types of housing are most reasonable and feasible within the city? And, you know, ultimately, I think the, when this project was initiated, we knew that when the time came, we were going to have to accommodate a whole bunch of new housing for the comprehensive plan. But there's also just a great need for housing within the region. So that was sort of the direction this project was heading. The Housing Action Plan did have a couple recommendations that came, kind of a suite of recommendations, actually, that cover zoning, development regulations, other types of code updates that the city should consider moving forward. And the, this Housing Action Plan was adopted by council in 2021 via Resolution 5592. So to follow up on that Housing Action Plan, there were two specific policies that staff was, was interested in. You know, as we kind of coordinated with other, other groups as well. One was an expansion of the MFTE program outside of downtown and what, what that may look like. And also specifically, what if Auburn were to look at allowing middle housing in specific zones throughout the city? So twenty, prior to 2023, this is before a lot of the House bills came out, so we were thinking, yeah, middle housing is an excellent choice. Where, where is it most feasible? Should we think about implementing middle housing as a pilot project in certain parts of the city? Should we allow it outright? And so this, this study helped us understand in, in the R5 and the current R5 and R7 zones, which are found throughout the city, which zones are most appropriate? What's the level of development that we could expect to occur? You know, would this be like tearing down of neighborhoods or just infill? So there was kind of like all these big, broad questions that our consultants were helping us understand. This was also funded through a grant, so that's, that was really nice. And from that analysis, we found that, you know, middle housing is most feasible for, through ownership, so especially with townhomes, so that's a very attractive product in Auburn. And it's, it's quite feasible throughout the city. So we were about three-quarters way through this project, and we found out that we're going to have to allow middle housing throughout the city anyway. So, but this did allow us to get a heads up, or kind of a head start on, on all the middle housing policy and requirements we were going to have to address. So in 2023, there were a couple bills that were passed. HB 1110 was also known as the Middle Housing Bill. It's focused on increasing housing supply, housing, various housing types and meeting as a component of affordability targets. HB 1220, it's listed here. This was actually passed in 2022, and this does have specific requirements for what cities need to evaluate within their comprehensive plan and their housing action plan. So things like making sure there's adequate supply of housing for a variety of incomes, racially disparate impact analysis in your, in your comprehensive plan. There was some guidance there. So in 2023, that's really when legislature kind of built on that, came up with this HB 1110, the middle housing, and then 1337, HB 1337, focused on simplifying the creation of ADUs, accessory dwelling units. So providing some requirements for the house, how the city should incorporate ADUs into, into code. All of these different requirements kind of fit the direction staff was, was heading with the comprehensive plan, with the intention of trying to implement middle housing. So, and now we've kind of hit this phase where we've taken all of this information from housing plans, regional data. And over the last couple of years, really starting in about mid-2023, we've been working as a, as a team throughout the city to develop our comprehensive plan. So in our land use and housing element specifically, there's been a lot of updates to incorporate middle housing, a variety of housing in our, in our housing element, and then updates to our zoning and land uses within our, our land use element. And I think on the next slide, we'll discuss what exactly those changes are. But so currently, staff are working with the Planning Commission to get what we're calling an action on each individual element. So there are nine, I think, elements we're moving forward with as part of the package. So over the course of about three months, and we're working through the Planning Commission process to get their action, their acceptance of each element, and then ultimately, acceptance of a final package, which would be a recommendation to, for adoption to city council. So last Tuesday, council provided acceptance on the land use and housing elements. And then next Tuesday, there's a couple more, more topics, and that's kind of how the schedule rolls out. And that final comprehensive plan package will be in front of City Council in Q3 of 2024. It might be actually more towards a Q4 2024, but we're looking at October, November, probably. Some, some of the major changes we're including in the land use and housing elements to implement middle housing and address the fairly large targets that the city must accommodate. So that's 12,112 new housing units throughout the city by 2044, and 19,520 new jobs by 2044. So one of the, one of the types of analysis that we needed to do was to make sure that we provided adequate zoning and density to provide the capacity for all of those things. So how we get there is a kind of another story, but the purpose of the land use and housing elements is to provide the actual capacity and, and policy to, to kind of work on the built infrastructure. So that includes some changes to the overall zoning, increasing residential densities specifically throughout the city, because middle housing is required to be implemented in all residential zones per, per state requirements. There are, HB 1110 prescribes, or describes nine different types of housing, middle housing. The city has to allow for six. We're proposing to allow all nine, just to allow the greatest amount of flexibility with the, for the community and development community to, to utilize. Allowing for accessory dwelling units throughout the city, that's something we already do and we get a lot of inquiries about. But 1337 has some kind of specific requirements about size and parking that, that we'll have to implement. One of the other interesting things about accessory dwelling units is, actually, I'll talk about it in the next slide. I got ahead of myself. So we have, we have the housing options, we have ADUs, and then it's kind of the placement of all of these different types of tools. So one of the concepts that we're moving forward with, or we'll be recommending, is what's called a growth center. And these sometimes align with some of those areas Alexandria mentioned, the adopted areas or special plan areas like Sagali. And sometimes they're just really And sometimes they're just really key places on corridors that are near transit. So the function of these growth centers is really to be adjacent to transit, high-capacity transit when possible, and to accommodate a lot of growth kind of within these centers. So that way, there's opportunities for walking to amenities, hopefully jobs, different types of housing within these areas. Downtown is technically a center. It's kind of like a mega-center in this plan, but, and I'll kind of talk about that too. So these centers are primarily focused on mixed use, but there are some centers such as, like the Outlet Collection has been identified as one, where it will be served by Future Rapid Ride down the line. And its intent is much more like job-focused than residential. A lot of these growth centers, and just overall, a lot of the growth is kind of aligned more towards high-capacity transit routes and stations. So in the future, in the near future, we'll have the Rapid Ride Eye Line running down Auburn Way North. And then into downtown, we have the Sounder Station. So trying to capture as much of that growth along these major transit corridors is great for, you know, mobility, but also for some of our climate goals. And then there's a strong emphasis on downtown growth. And I think I might have presented on this in the past, but through the last, over the last couple of years, talking with the community about different growth scenarios, one theme I kept hearing was, you should just put as much downtown as possible. So that's what we did. And so we are looking at expanding the boundaries of downtown further north. There's an overall growth in density, or increase in density throughout the downtown. And so when you capture a bunch of that growth, those targets downtown, and then you allocate the rest of the, as much growth to these centers as possible, that kind of leaves the rest of the city for the rest. And so that's sort of the tiered system we looked at as we were allocating growth. And luckily, we did have some consultants on board to help us make sure that, you know, as we were looking at various scenarios, we weren't proposing density and growth. That was like outside the bounds of reality. It was like, it had to be feasible.
Have you heard of businesses building? I heard this in Seattle when I went to the Habitat Humanities Event. A banker, we were going up the escalator, and he was talking about they're going to build apartments going up because there are people that work there, were moving out of the area, and now they're having to travel, you know. So they're building apartments or condos or something for the people that work there so they could stay there and they'll have their, you know, some of them don't have cars, so they commute on buses or the train. So then when I went to Texas, I went to one of the public hearings for their land use, and they were talking about something like that also, building within the downtown and keeping their people there. Have you heard of anything like that?
Are you describing like workforce housing within?
Something like that, yes.
I mean, I've heard of that generally, like in Seattle with Amazon and some of these other companies. That isn't something we necessarily looked at for downtown, but I don't see why, if there was a proposal for that.
I was just wondering.
There are four of those units over at Bridge.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering if we were thinking, if ever thought of it, you know.
Oh, yeah. So live-work is a type of housing unit that we would be looking at in the future. So, yeah, Mayor is correct. We do have those in downtown. One of the zoning concepts that we're proposing is called residential flex. And so the purpose of that is to try to encourage more live-work in certain parts of the city. So conversion of existing homes into like partially commercial or services while living in the unit. And then in downtown, as part of the downtown plan, over on the west side of the tracks, there's another area that's similar to the RF zone, but it's much more kind of like maker faith, like base. So it's like kind of more industrial in nature, but like live-work space for those types of, so yeah, thank you. So some of the other major changes that we've been incorporating into the comprehensive plan, middle housing is allowed in all residential zones, as I mentioned. And the new density standard we're moving forward with per HB 1110 is we no longer use dwelling units per acre. That's, doesn't matter anymore. Their new standard is units per lot. So it's anywhere between four and six units per lot is permitted. The development still needs to fit on those lots. So if it fits, it sits, is the thing we've been saying.
So what's a comment from our constituents that live here that have pretty big lots? And are we looking to ask about building in there or anything like that?
Well, as we move forward with the, sorry.
As you're looking, the mayor's saying it's private property.
Yeah. Tell them what to do on their private property as far as their building.
Yeah, we can't force anybody to redevelop or anything like that. But what we can do is through code, a minimum lot size per unit is a standard that we've been considering. So if someone does want to redevelop, like say five acres, we can through code kind of say, hey, this is how many units that you really need to put here. And I think we already do that, but.
Yes, Councilmember Rex.
Will that allow mobile homes to go in, in a lot if somebody wants it there?
I believe our current, I believe our current code allows that if there's certain requirements.
Okay. Councilmember Baldwin.
Sure. One thing that I've been seeing as a housing trend, perhaps more related to how people are living versus the planning specifics that go with it, but I'm curious if our go-forward plan covers this in any capacity, which is increasing trends for multi-generational living, where you've got kind of two dynamics, either a situation where aging parents are coming to, you know, live with their kids or a situation where you've got younger adults who can't afford to launch and, you know, get into the housing market, continuing to reside with their parents. So in spaces like that, where, you know, I think if people could, they would do additional dwelling units. Do we have anything that would accommodate, you know, additions to a house to put more than one family in it, if you will, or more than one household in it?
Top of my mind, I mean, I can think of like ADU, ADUs, like attached ADUs as a type of development that would be permitted. You can typically see that as like an annexation of an existing house or basement use. It's technically a separate dwelling unit. That is something that we've talked about and we're wondering, you know, how should that be addressed? I think that there's an opportunity when you consider all the different types of housing that could be permitted on one lot. That's probably another approach, instead of having one large house with lots of rooms, kind of multiple small houses on one lot, yeah.
Well, just thinking through what types of combinations that could look like from a structural standpoint, whether it's, you know, adjacent ADU, whether that's, you know, supporting, you know, an addition on a house, whether that's, like you said, breaking up a parcel into two semi-pieces. So just thinking of kind of that as a trend that I'm seeing in the marketplace and how we might be able to accommodate that with our land use and housing approach. And then the second piece with that is always thinking towards folks with differing physical abilities as far as wheelchairs, walkers, ramps, things of that nature to help people stay within their existing housing, anything that we have in that space to help facilitate people who need to retrofit their homes.
That's, thank you. That's a great point. And that's when we had a, when we were working on the Housing Action Plan project, that is a question we raised to our consultants who've done work throughout the West Coast. And so, you know, townhomes are great, but they're three stories. So how does that work? And I think he was saying that ARP was working on some, yeah, recommendations that were supposed to come out. There's some like, I know that there's certain types of, there are some flexibility. There is some flexibility within middle housing. Like you don't necessarily have to build up. You can build sideways. So you can do stacked. So there's, I know that there's some tools that can be utilized. That is a great consideration, I think.
Just some thoughts as you're working through it. Because I love a townhome, but they're not great if you've got bad knees, so.
As my 75-year-old mother will say too. I think I addressed all the rest of these bullets on here, but the ADUs will also be allowed in all zones and will be a lot easier to permit through 1337. Oh, this is the point I wanted to make. So one of the interesting part things about HB 1110 is it allows cities the flexibility of using ADUs to meet the density requirements for middle housing. So say there's a lot and somebody wants to build four units. Cities can say, yeah, you have all these nine types of middle housing, but you can also use ADUs. So they can build like two townhomes and two ADUs to kind of get to that four-unit minimum. And they're really, I mean, when you say minimum, they can build one if they want to as long as they meet our development requirements, so. And I can take any questions?
Any questions? Other than what we've already asked? Okay.
Thank you.
Great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure Jeff's watching, so you know she did a good job. Okay, that's the end of our last item. So I guess the meeting is that. Thank you, everybody.
Good job.